Hello.
Hello, I'm trying to stay on mute because as you, as you have heard, my dogs are quite vocal today.
They want to play. It's such a gorgeous evening. Wow. Brooke must have a twin because though I swear the woman who was taking pictures today looked like Brooke. I think Brooke has a twin who was in town today, Bonnie.
Beg your pardon?
Certainly, I think Brooke has a twin that was in town today. I saw some woman taking pictures. I thought it was Brooke.
It probably was Brooke.
Was she there?
Yeah, no, I came up alone.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. You said you came, you said you would just come up. I thought maybe both of you were there.
No, usually, and that's certainly the better practice, but this particular time it's, it's just me. I did, this has, this has to do with get the garden going and that's, that's not Brooke's thing.
No.
At all.
Okay.
Because the snow is gone.
Well, that's good, but is the ground still frozen?
Oh, it's supposed to be sixty-four here tomorrow and Wednesday.
Wow. I talked to a friend in Denver yesterday. Was eighty-seven in Denver yesterday. Two weeks, I called him four weeks ago. And it was, he had two feet of snow. Very crazy winter. Yep. He's a hundred and three years old, this guy.
Well, you just keep doing whatever it is he's doing.
He's a, he's a West Point graduate who, you know, still gets around, still drives a car.
Wow. That's, that's very impressive.
Yep.
I will say one thing now that the snow is gone. And I've had more of a chance, I mean, I only got here a little, little before the executive session, which is probably why I forgot about it, but there's more, there, there's more yard and garden here than I had remembered.
I think. Remorse. Emory, I see Brian's joined us. Do you want to help? You want to bring him into the?
Um, I, I, I can do that. I was waiting to see if you wanted to open the, the hearing for.
Yeah, we can open it, but yeah.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know if Brian Bassett or Brian Williams will be presenting, but at this point I've promoted Brian Bassett.
Yeah.
So, so Brian, do you want me to promote Brian Williams as well?
Okay, thanks. We'll do that. Okay, well, it is six o'clock and we, we are all here minus Andrew Williams. And Andrew, for the purposes of this meeting, has recused himself, so he will not be attending this particular meeting. As so we will move ahead with the meeting as is, as scheduled. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend Article Four of the Use Regulations of Chapter One Ninety-Seven Zoning of the municipal code of the city of Lewis, Delaware by amending one ninety-seven dash fifty-one non-residential zones and attachment for relating to building height in the community facilities, educational zone, CFE. And this is a request relating to the new middle school that will be built where the current shield school is located. And joining us tonight, we have Brian Bassett and Brian Williams. And they're going to make a presentation to us and then we'd be taking public comment. Janelle, is there anything from the planning commission perspective you wish to add to that before we get started?
I would just note that the proposed ordinance allows the height to go up to fifty feet, provided that the portions that are beyond forty feet in height have to be set back fifty feet from the property lines. So it, it limits to what and where the height would be able to be placed on, on the properties.
Janelle, can you just also mention, because one of the things we did look at is what properties are in this zone? So where, where it would apply? Do you want to explain that a little too?
Absolutely. So there's just a few properties that are so, zone CFE. One is the Children's Beach House off of, on Bay Avenue. Based on the property, this would be very difficult for them to increase the height. One of the others would be the University of Delaware off of Pilot Town Road. They have a number of large property there. So this could definitely impact them as well. And I believe there might be one other property that's doing the same way. So this does not, just doesn't impact one use. It would impact multiple properties that are zone CFE throughout the city.
It would also impact the, the, what's the Fred Thomas building as well, right? On the, on the other end of, at the end of George H. B. Smith Park. So, yeah. Okay, so with that, I, I, Brian Bassett from the Cape Horn Open School District and Brian Williams, the architect are here and I, I think we understand that Brian Williams, you're going to be making the presentation.
I, I will be the expert witness, but yes, Mr. Bassett, as the owner's rep will be, uh, leading the charge here, but thank you. I, I look forward to speaking with you all.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So Brian Bassett, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you and thank you all for giving us the public hearing and getting it on the calendar so quick. We really appreciate it. We're going to try to keep this brief. I'm assuming any public that are there may have some questions and I wanted Brian as our expert and design to be available to try to answer some of the questions, but try to give you just a brief overview and explain to you why we're asking for a few additional feet for this building, but this particular project for the middle school was actually approved back in two thousand and sixteen, which is hard to believe that it's going that fast, but this was our last project in that one referendum that had four or five different projects in it. And we knew all along to make this work, we were going to have to be on three properties. So what you see on your screen to the lower left is the current Shields Elementary site. The middle property is the current Lewis School site, which used to be Sussex Consortium a year or so ago. And then on the top right is the Fred Thomas building that you mentioned. So we knew we were going to have to utilize all three parcels to make a middle school work for a couple of reasons. You have to have athletic fields when you have a middle school. But also we knew that parking was very inadequate on this site as well as stormwater. There is no stormwater management on the current Shields property. So we knew to fix those issues, we were going to have to go vertical for at least part of the building so that we could get everybody off of the roads. We don't want parents backing up the, the, the main roads or and we just want to give safe parking for all the events that could occur here. So to make that happen, we positioned the building where you see it on the bottom, the bottom left. So we also knew even in two thousand and sixteen that to make those things happen, we probably have to go three stories in height. However, we did not want the entire building to be three stories. So we've worked with our architects, ABHA, so that it's just the classroom wing and we'll show you that in a few minutes. Classroom wing is the three-story height. The rest of the building actually is mostly two stories and there's even a section that's probably a story and a half. So we were able to pull that off. I'm also very pleased with ABHA. We asked them to use some design elements or tricks, if you will, to make the three-story scale come back down to look like a two-story building. We didn't want, quite frankly, to look like the hospital, you know, I mean, they've got to do what they've got to do and you can tell every level of that building when you ride by it. We wanted to blend it in and we actually got that idea from the row of homes right in front of the current Shields that really some of those are three stories, but the top with the curved roof and the windows in it make it look like attic space and it really tricks the eye to scale down some of those properties. So we wanted to borrow that idea. The other thing that we were thrilled about is our setbacks and I know you mentioned it in the ordinance language, but on this small of a property to, to make all this fit, our setbacks are great and Brian Williams is going to show you that, but we feel like in every angle and direction, we are far enough away from the neighbors and the roads to be highly effective for everyone. And that's hard to pull off with a, a property that's this small. I think we're, you know, ten and a half acres probably for this, this school site. We know that we could keep the design three stories and meet the current code if we didn't get the additional. I think it's around six, seven, eight feet that would, we would need to go up to, I think it was the fifty number that Janelle mentioned. However, if we build it to that three-story height to stay under the current requirements, it's just not effective for schools. You've been in schools before. I think the old Cape High was one where the ceilings were low. It's not conducive for noise or just the overall comfort of those facilities, but as we've quickly learned in this COVID environment, we need as much fresh air as we can get. So, you know, we want to maximize that ceiling space in between every level with the modern HVAC system and the, the most fresh air returns we can get. We know the technology that's needed now is way more than even, you know, ten years ago when the high school was built and all those wiring chases and harnesses all go through those ceiling scapes, sprinkler systems. Again, we want, and we have to to meet code. It's always better if we can run all that in the ceiling height and, and overall, if you go and follow a bunch of middle schoolers down the hall, you don't want the lowest ceiling possible. So we feel like for all those reasons, the extra six to eight feet that we would ask for would certainly meet the needs of the students. And honestly, from every direction that you could stand and, and I've walked all around this facility, I don't think you would be able to tell the six to eight foot difference between if we shrunk it back down to meet current code or if we go with this new ordinance and can raise it up. And it's because the setbacks are so great and because of the design elements. When you're standing at Blockhouse Pond or on Savannah or anywhere else at the elementary, new elementary school next door, you wouldn't notice those, you know, six feet additional to that building. So, and, and you had already mentioned it, but I believe you're right with the way the ordinance is written to meet the setbacks that we've met and we know that space is so valuable in, in the city limits. I just don't, don't think you're going to run into this very often besides us, even at our Fred Thomas property. If, if we are ever to try to build something there, we're not, if you look where the track goes in that top right, I don't think we could meet the setbacks in three of those directions in order to go up there and the new Shields Elementary is, is built and our chimney is probably at this height. Anyway, but we know we need those athletic fields behind the school, so we can't build anything else there anyway. So I think it's a great way, you know, whoever was responsible to, to draft the ordinance. It was very well done and it would certainly meet our needs and I believe it would protect you all for the future as well. So with that, I'll turn things over to, to Brian Williams from ABHA Architects. Brian, if you could just, I guess, ask them to, to move the slides for you and you can just point out a couple of the views and the setbacks and then we'll be available.
Questions. Yeah, thank you very much, Brian. I hope everybody can hear me. So obviously, you know, Brian's explained the idea that this is a campus. And as Brian said, you know, a middle school requires, you know, athletic fields and, and other things. So unfortunately, you know, the, the site that we were provided can't accommodate all that, but fortunately we have access to all three sites. However, that does put a lot of pressure on the site where we are actually erecting the building. You can see on that zoomed in view that we have right there, or at least the highlighted view, that there's a significant amount of parking and stormwater. So what, what is obviously is gray and looks like drive lanes and parking lots. Those are all the required parking spaces that we have based on code for faculty, for events, for parent drop off. And, and, and as Brian explained, the strategy for how we want to, you know, ease the burden on Sussex and Savannah. You know, we, we've split up the different accesses, access points to the building. And it's what you sort of see in a golden, golden rod color. That's actually all the stormwater that is required by Denrec. There is no, there is no stormwater treatment on the facility as it stands right now. And to accommodate that and to accommodate the parking requirements, the fire lanes, et cetera, you can, you can see how quickly that our site has been, been eaten up with those needs. And it, as you know, as Brian has aptly noted, that it required our footprint to be very compact, but also go vertical. And, uh, you know, that not only was requirement, it actually is working very well with the arrangement of a middle school. You know, if this were an elementary school, we would not be maybe seeking the three stories, both, you know, putting younger children on upper stories isn't appropriate. And also there are multiple grades, but this being a middle school, which is six, seven, eight, it was a natural stacking of sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade that, that is very pleasing to the district. Their, their current schools are, are set up in wings. But this actually vertical arrangement is, is very amenable to the district and they've been very happy with this. So it just, it's, it seems a natural synergy of the, the site sort of forced us into a good solution. If you could move on to the next one, we can sure to show you how this would be viewed. Now again, these are aerial views, sort of bird's eye, as we call them from up above, but it hopefully gives you an idea of what we call the massing or how large, different volumes and areas of the buildings are. And you can see this backside. This would be as if you were approaching from Savannah from, as you were coming into town and this large parking lot would be the activities parking lot. So what's on the backside here is the gymnasium, which is the curved roof. And then the band choir and auditorium. So basically all the public spaces you would approach from this direction and this, at this point is six hundred feet away from Savannah Road. So even these somewhat large spaces, we purposely set them as far away as we possibly could from Savannah, knowing that we were going to have a large, and that's a compact footprint, but we know it's vertical. So we moved all these things very far away from Savannah such that from a distance, you know, obviously the scale as perceived by a pedestrian or, or a driver would seem much smaller. And so that was very purposeful and we arranged all those on, on one side of the site, knowing they were still visible from Savannah. And if you would please flip to the next one. So this would be, as Brian said, the view from, this is viewing it directly south. So, you know, as if you were, again, a bird's eye view over top of the Lewis School playfields. So the portion that we're looking at is the three-story section. That would be the classrooms. And if you can, you know, I, I know it's maybe a little hard to see with this far off view, but as Brian was referring to, thank you very much. Yeah, if you could zoom in maybe on the, on the facade a little bit. Something we've tried and we've used this successfully at other projects. I was the, fortunate enough to be the architect on Dover High School and we had a similar issue with, you know, we needed three stories for their high school and it was, there was a concern over the height. And what we've done here is if you look at what the lower, the lower portion that is in a sort of pink color is actually brick. And there's a, there's sort of a waste as we call it. And then the upper, the upper level is actually a, a third story. So it really is in, in, in a, in a, in a positive way is deceptive. It actually makes it feel like it's only two stories and particularly from a distance. So we know we needed those three stories. We know we try, you know, and, and you also see the amount of distance from Sussex. It's actually well over a hundred feet from, from Sussex, yet alone Savannah. The portion to your left, which is the media center, that's actually over four hundred feet from Savannah. So we're very comfortable. All these setbacks will, will certainly well meet those and even the close one on the right-hand side, that stair tower to the right-hand side, that's almost seventy, seventy-five feet away from our U of D neighbors. So all, and, and there's only a narrow sliver and that's, I'm, yeah, and, and the other, the other design strategy was we knew we had this three-story portion and the portion that was three-story, we tried to have face onto our own property, which was the playfields across the street, which are again, part of the, the whole complex of the middle school. What the neighbors, those homes to the left and these U of D housing to the right, the three-story portion they see is actually very narrow, only about twenty, twenty-five feet. And it is again, well with, well above those, you know, setbacks that are in the language of the zoning ordinance. So, you know, we, we know we had some limitations and actually it was a sort of, you know, it was a, it was, it's an actually sometimes nice to have a design problem where you have constraints. You, you come up with solutions and, and we feel like that actually helped us to solve multiple problems at the same time. But at, but at that point, Brian is absolutely correct that though we were allowed to go to three stories, the ordinance at forty feet really isn't compatible with a modern school structure. So that, that's why we're here for you today, but we hopefully you can understand from the way we're trying to design the building. We are still trying to be sensitive to our neighbors and, and, and to pedestrians, et cetera, those on Savannah. Even though, you know, with these limitations, we're hoping that we have, have addressed that in a way that's not too offensive to others. And if we could please move on to the next one. Yeah, thank, yeah, his, he has to zoom back out. Thank you. So what, what we wanted to show was this next, this actually steps it down. The other two views were for more, more elevated just so you could get, you know, again, the massing of the building. This is from what we're calling the view corridor. So basically what you're seeing to the, to the right-hand side of the screen there is the existing historic Lewis School. And what you see on the left is a representation of those homes. So this is what a pedestrian or, or a motor vehicle would see from Savannah. And hopefully, you know, even though we're a bit taller than both the homes and the Lewis School, you can understand the, the realistic impact of the distance. This is over four hundred, probably from this point, we're closer to four hundred and fifty feet away. And again, you see, you get the short end of the building at Savannah View. So that was part of the design strategy that we did. But yeah, thank you. I think, I think we've been through a lot of the, you know, trying to, Brian's got to reel me into, I'll, I'll talk forever. So Brian's got to, you know, move on to these slides. So what you have next is really, you know, I'm from Lewis and I will, we'll joke, I'll joke around. I'll say this is the, this is the Lewis skyline. But we wanted to sort of also get, we know that all the, the public and civic buildings that, that exist are along Savannah. And this is just a graphic representation of the three major buildings and structures that are on Lewis that do, that quite honestly do give it a civic presence. You know, there's, there's no, you know, casting blame here on these different buildings. BB Hospital surely, you know, needs the levels and floors that it has, but we just did want to represent the scale of how these different structures appear from Savannah. And this, this is not, this is not a matter of perspective or anything. This is their true height as comparative to Savannah Road. And you can see that the, the BB Hospital is over eighty feet tall. The Lewis School and represented in purple is, is, is just about forty or a little bit over. And the blue, which is the proposed middle school building is, we're, we're asking, you know, again, the fifty-foot variance is, is what we're discussing today, but most of our three-story area, the parapet's around forty-six and we have a couple of firewalls that approach forty-eight. So that's why the, the number is there. And then if you, you can also see the various setbacks. So you can see how close BB is around thirty, thirty-five feet for the majority of that eighty-foot structure. The Lewis School, again, built a hundred years ago, was, was about eighty feet. And then as I've said a few times here, our setbacks are much more substantial. And not only do we have those setbacks, but those homes that are in front of us always shielded the old elementary or the old Shield School. And although we worked carefully to make sure that you could see Shield, we want this to be an asset to the city. So we worked hard to make sure that those two views that we presented were interesting and, and, and good at, you know, good recognizable school facades. However, those, those homes are actually still helping us by somewhat shielding the school, the school from Savannah and you only really catches glimpses of it from those two view quarters, which are again, four hundred and six hundred feet away from the road. So, you know, that is, that's really the basis of why we think that this really has very little impact on the reality of the perception of the school. And if you would please move on to the next one and zoom in, you can see our immediate setbacks. Again, we not only want to be sensitive to those people who are traveling up and down Savannah and, and not be too imposing. We, you know, you can see here that we're also trying to be sensitive to the, the neighbors. And I'd say that sixty feet on the upper is actually changed in recent design efforts and we're actually, we have shifted the building away. We're more in the neighborhood of almost eighty feet away. We're still trying to, you know, refine everything and meet our fire lane requirements, but that's a minimum that we would achieve that six, that, I know it was a fifty, but we're at least at sixty at this point and probably going to better that as we move along. And, and you can see that, that one corner is ninety, that's actually improved in the last week or so. We're, we're over a hundred feet away. And I know these are just numbers, but I think you can, you know, if a fifty-foot, you know, even if you know, you know, geometry, like, you know, fifty feet and fifty feet away, your perception of that as, as, at a, at a human scale is almost imperceptible if you add a couple more feet to the, to the actual height of the building. And as Brian said, again, you know, this, I, I know a concern may be that this may set a precedent, but quite frankly, you know, unless Lewis undergoes major expansion and annexation of other areas, this really will be the last public school, certainly on Savannah or a major public area that this would really have any impact on. The Children's Beach House, as, as Janelle noted, really would near impossible for them to meet those requirements. Lewis School, which will be the, the next Shield School has completed or is in the midst of completing their renovations and additions. And the University of Delaware is somewhat removed, obviously down Pilot Town Road with all the, the land that they have. And this would be, this is not a school that would be planned for any future additions. We barely, you know, are able to fit our building onto the site. So we would not be coming back with any future additions that would challenge that in any way. So this really has no impact or precedent set for anyone. You know, this is a very, I'm, I'm trying, long-winded way of saying this is a very specific request pertinent to our building that really wouldn't open any avenues for other people to, to take advantage of.
Thank you, Brian.
Certainly. I'm sorry. I, I try to be short. Brian always tells me that and I apologize. It's just, uh, there's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot, lot of thought that went into it and I, I don't want to miss anything.
No, very helpful. Uh, are there questions from members of council first and then we'll get right to the public?
I don't have any, Mayor.
Great, okay. I just had the, the, along the university housing property, that, that straight line. I assume that's a bus loop. Is that correct?
That, I'm sorry. Yes, actually, Mr. Becker, that is actually the parent drop off and the purpose of that one. That's on the, I guess it would be considered the west end of the property, north on the drawing. That is to make sure that we are keeping as few people off of Sussex and certainly Savannah as possible. So the idea is they come all the way up Sussex, go into a, we, we anticipate they could get between forty and fifty cars onto our loop around. And that would, that would keep the parents off of Sussex, which we know that's an issue, not only with the Highland Acres folks, but you know, just other, certainly keeping them all Savannah, but that's, that is the parent drop off. The bus loop would be on the backside that, that first aerial view I showed you, that would, where the activities entrances, that would be the bus loops. We're separating cars and buses and then the faculty would be in the front of the building or, or the north end near the playfields. And then again, on sort of on the corner in front of the building that you would, the, the, the view you would see from Savannah, that's where the faculty and visitors would go. So we're trying to separate everybody and keep the traffic, keep the traffic low.
That's that's the same principle you used with the redo of Shields or the, the old Lewis School, you separated buses from vehiculars.
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's an almost must with schools for safety, for traffic, for any number of reasons. You, you, that's like rule one is, is separate everyone for the safety of the kids.
And the other thought was that's our closest boundary. So with it being the parent drop off, that only happens twice a day. There's not traffic or parking there this throughout the day. So the thought was, you know, have to deal with them for whatever it takes to, to get everybody unloaded twenty, thirty minutes and then, um, nothing until the end of the day because visitors would pull into the other parking lot and access the other side of the building.
And, and activities, Brian, absolutely right. And activities would all be to the south, what, you know, the southeast corner. And that will be, you know, that will all be protected and shielded with landscaping and, and lights that don't, you know, bleed. So yeah, absolutely. Stay away from our neighbors as much as possible, except for those brief times during the day when parents are dropping off, which, which is a necessity.
And if, if you said this, I apologize, but your anticipated population, student population.
It's a six hundred students, six hundred student school, which actually was to our benefit with Dell dot and, and hopefully we'll be moving forward that it's actually a reduction in the population of the current school, which is over eight.
That's a, that's a DOE number by formula and we've mentioned it at the elementary schools when we finished and DOE has put this in writing to us. When they fund you for a six hundred student school, that's really a max overcapacity. We anticipate that we would feel full around five hundred and thirty, five hundred and fifty students. So that would be the number that we're anticipating growing to eventually for that school.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, the, the, you're, you, the other thing you anticipate is staggering the start and end dates between the elementary and the middle school, which I'm sure has a, a whole bunch of education purposes, but it also has the side benefit of of, of traffic.
Yeah, the, the stagger, the start times for the elementary and middle schools are at different times.
Yeah, I want to say they're about an hour apart right now, I believe.
It's significant.
The elementary.
I'm, I'm assuming in the lighting on that, on that loop for vehiculars, you're, you're doing a lot of down lighting only.
Yes, Mr. Becker, that's what I was referring to, that not only will we be shielding from those homes, those homes that are between Savannah and our property, we're required by code and law that whatever, like parking light fixtures, any, any light. that whatever, like parking light fixtures, any any lighting that is on the building, what it's, it's called shielding and that's exactly what you, what you're stating. It has to come, it it, we're not allowed. Now, there's going to be ambient, just, it's impossible to completely eliminate, but we're required to not recruit in increase the the light levels on our neighbors. So any light we have in the parking lot and that in that activities parking lot, those light fixtures will have devices on them that make the light fixtures direct their light directly down. And that will be, that will be true on, we're not allowed to have any bleed outside of our property.
Perfect. Okay. All right. If there are no further questions from the table, then I think we have.
I have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, Tim. Please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Brian, for your presentation. Very informative. Did I notice in the site plan that the driveway entrance that presently comes off of Savannah Road up to the school is presently, I believe, a one-way drive and it's an exit. And on your, on your site plan, are you now showing that it's a two, it's ingress and egress? Is that correct?
That that is correct and that's to keep, and we've had the discussions with Dell dot, how to minimize that. It'd be a right turn only out for the buses. The idea is to keep the buses away from Sussex entirely.
I see. So the buses will actually use that driveway to get on to
In and out. That is correct. That is, that is the bus entrance only and it will be the activities entrance after hours. The intent of that is to keep buses off of Sussex entirely for the middle school. Now, we know they go there for the elementary school, but we're, we're trying to keep them off since that entrance already existed. We're, and it is used for buses. We're trying to maintain that, but have it in and out. So they loop in, come around the bus loop and come back out and never interact with Sussex.
I think we're really focusing.
I see. And so any parent who's what was that Ted?
I think we need to really focus on the ordinance tonight.
Yeah, we, what I look for, I I know we have, we have our joint commission hearing soon and we we definitely, we have much more detail to share with you at that point and and we definitely look forward to that, but yeah. Maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe, yeah, Mr. Becker, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions related to the ordinance that we're proposing here? Okay, if not, we we have a few attendees and we'd open it up to the floor. If you'd raise your hand in the chat, we'd be happy to, either you could either type your question in or raise your hand and we'll elevate. It looks like Tom Panetta has a question. Tom?
Yeah, I just have a simple question. No problems with what they're proposing, but is revising the ordinance the best way? Or going to the Board of Adjustments so we don't risk this impacting something down the line that none of us can foresee?
So I I think either Janelle or I could try to answer that, but I was the one who actually had recommended that we do it through an ordinance revision. I'm not sure that it meets the legal standard for the Board of Adjustment because you're looking at exceptional practical difficulty and and, you know, we don't know how the board would would view that. What we did do as we started to approach this was, as Janelle mentioned early on, we looked at what other properties would be affected and we put that setback in to provide to provide the 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 buffering so that you don't have something taller that is, you know, adjacent to a property line. So really, other than the this property that we're looking at here, the the only other place where we could possibly have a a similar situation where you might have a building that would get to fifty feet would be at the university campus. And that's a very large campus and their buildings are 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 very far from the property line. So we we made a point to draft it in a way that it wouldn't have unintended consequences.
Yeah, and and I I recognize that and I think you you did a good job. It's just, we we all know that we're, none of us are smart enough to know what's going to happen five years down the line. I think we've all been taken by surprise by some things that occur, not with this property, but in other properties. That that was my only comment. Thank you.
Also note that it also has to go through the Joint Site Development and Hack Review Committee, not for just this property, but for any property doing any type of site plan that meets certain requirements. So there would be an architectural review as part of that development and part of that review. So if there was concerns over that height and that setback, that could be reviewed as part of that site plan review.
But correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's in the code, it's by right. So I'm not sure that the joint committee could restrict it.
They could actually make suggestions on what the building looks like to lessen an impact of overall height.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a few other folks in the audience. Any else, any, are there any other questions from the audience? Or attendees? One more time, are there any other comments or questions from the those in the attendance? Looks like I'm not hearing any. I don't see anything. Do you, Anne Marie? Thanks, Greg. So.
I do not. So I do want to note that this is on next Monday's agenda for action.
Yeah, yeah, I, this will be on the meeting, the regular city council meeting next Monday night, a week from tonight, basically the same time. And so we have an opportunity to hold the record open for public comment. I would suggest that we keep it open until Friday of this coming week, until noon on Friday. Not this coming week, but that would be Friday the ninth. In case someone missed it and wants to comment. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
A motion from Bonnie, a second from Rob. I'll, again, thank everyone for your participation this evening and Brian and Brian. Thank you both for your participation and making the, informing us of what's going on here. Thank Janelle and Anne Marie for your work on this ordinance. So all of those in favor? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing and we're going to go right into the next meetings. And we need to bring Andrew in at this point. Did you send him a note by any chance, Anne Marie?
I did text him that we were wrapping up. Oh, he said he's going in as an attendee, so.
Okay.
I'll watch.
Mary's coming. Good. Hello, welcome back. Okay, so now it is six thirty-four and we are here for a meeting to